Mr. Lampman, are you doing another thing? Meaning, yes?
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
Switch music.
Before we, before we start tonight's board meeting, we, we would like to let a second ensemble perform for us and in about five minutes, we'll start. Four minutes and thirty-two seconds. Thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the Board of Education meeting of April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. And standing as you are able, I would like to have the pledge of allegiance led by none other than Mr. Nate Lampman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lampman. And speaking of Mr. Lampman, Dr. Latch, do you have something to say about that gentleman?
I do have something to say about that gentleman. Anyway, we're here tonight to honor the great Mr. Nate Lampman as he retires from the Celine Area Schools at the end of this school year. I want to start by highlighting some of his and the music department's accomplishments, which there are many. This list could go on for a long, long time, but we're going to start with a few here. The Celine High School Ninth Grade Band, Blue Symphonic Band, Gold Symphonic Band, Wind Ensemble, and Marching Bands have all received superior ratings at the MSBOA Evaluation Festivals every time they performed over the past twenty-eight years, which is an incredible accomplishment. Second, Mr. Lampman's partnered with MSU, U of M, and EMU as a cooperating teacher for over fifty student teachers during his time in Celine. In two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Lampman was honored to win the Association Teacher/Educators Outstanding Mentor/Teacher of the Year Award for the state of Michigan. And that really does speak to his teaching ability and his care and concern of bringing up other professionals in this career to try to aspire to do things that he's done over. Very few educators can say that. Next, the Celine High School Wind Ensemble performed at the Michigan Music Conference three times in two thousand and two, two thousand and seven, and two thousand and fifteen. Next, with the help of incredible administrators, parents, students, and colleagues, Mr. Lampman innovated and provided a strong musical, music performance experience from the end of two thousand and twenty through the spring of two thousand and twenty-one during the COVID pandemic. And this was a time when we weren't always meeting in person, music programs were being canceled, we had to have special masks and how to play the instruments. I mean, this was a really challenging time, and somehow Nate and Mr. Lampman and the music department figured out creative ways to keep the music going, which was really important for our students and our families and our community. And, and, and the band program quickly rebounded in numbers and proficiency. Next, let's talk about the Celine High School bands, which have represented the Celine community on performance tours over twelve times in the past twenty-eight years, including seven performances at the Magic Kingdom in Orlando, Florida, a performance at Symphony Center in Chicago, Gatlinburg, Valparaiso, and at Western Michigan University. Also, nearly three thousand students have been part of the Celine High School band program during his tenure in Celine. Many of them continue to make music at universities across the country, some as music educators, some as professional musicians, many in local community bands in their places of worship and in their homes. Mr. Lampman is so proud of all of them and the wonderful music and experiences they've made together, which is why Mr. Lampman is always recognized as one of the favorite and most inspirational teachers at Celine Compass Awards, which is where, you know, students bring a favorite educator. So, he's just been incredible. Now, I want to personally talk about Nate and speak about his leadership in the music program from the perspective of one of his colleagues. We've been working together for a long, long time. Mr. Lampman has done a tremendous job of encouraging his student musicians in the band program and all of our music programs to be part of the local community. I've always been so impressed by the way in which he specifically has gone out and sought opportunities to play in the community to make the music program be part of our community, whether it's at Memorial Day events, the Celine Holiday Parade, the various music festivals around town and throughout the state. You know, he's just always looked for opportunities to partner and, and share his love of music and our kids' love of music with others. Yet, Mr. Lampman's reach goes beyond the Celine community. As was mentioned previously, the musicians have reformed in Florida, Chicago, and Gatlinburg, to name a few, but one thing that I have always been very impressed of is his ability to also look out for other communities that potentially are less fortunate to build the base of musicians. For example, Crescendo Detroit, this is something that Mr. Lampman has spearheaded, where they go in and provide funding to support students in Detroit. And this is from last year. I want to read an email that Nate sent to band families about Crescendo Detroit. "Celine band families, as you remember, we collected donations for Crescendo Detroit earlier this year at our fall and holiday band concerts. I am happy to announce that due to your generosity, we were able to make a donation of just under two thousand dollars this year, and this has happened yearly for a long time. Thank you so much for your continued support of this outstanding organization that brings music, art, and dance to so many children in the city of Detroit. Thank you, Nate Lampman." Finally, Nate's done an incredible, Mr. Lampman's done an incredible job leading and supporting the very talented music teachers in our school district. And even though the community, the district, myself, we're going to miss him dearly, his legacy will be in the way that he has mentored and supported the many skilled music, music teachers in our district who will continue to provide great teaching and learning opportunities for our students for years to come. Mr. Lampman, thank you very much for all that you've done in Celine Area Schools and our students for so many years. And if, Mr., if you can come on up, Mr. Lampman, and introduce some of the student musicians, and then we want to be able to also take a photo and do that kind of thing.
Well, good evening. Don't they sound great?
They do.
And before I introduce them, two just little notes, two kind of unusual ensembles. If you know what a brass quintet normally is, that's not it, right? Two tubas, two French horns, a euphonium, that's an unusual group. That's really neat. A jazz combo with a French horn soloist, also a little unique. And what I love about both these groups, and you wouldn't know by just looking at them, these are both student organized groups. They formed the groups, they found the music, they rehearsed the music. We've never worked together. We work together about, what, two and a half minutes once? Something like that. I said, "You sound great, keep doing what you're doing." This is two perfect examples of what students can do on their own, right? The fact that they can choose, they can form their group, they can rehearse their group. You meet, what, four, four times a week sometimes? Three times a week? I mean, this is a really, really great example of student initiative, and I think, before we go on and introduce them, if we could give them one more round of applause. Now that you're back. So, this is the Celine High, we don't have a name yet, so suggestions would be great, but this is for now the Celine High School Jazz Combo. Rokas Kozlowski on bass, Leo Hoffman on drums, Shilo Livingston on guitar, and then Quinton Riggs over here on French horn. You guys sounded awesome. And then, this brass quintet was just nominated a few weeks ago at the state festival as one of the outstanding ensembles in the state of Michigan. They just submitted a recording, and we'll be finding out in the next couple of days that they were selected as the top brass quintet for the state of Michigan. If that happens, they will perform in May at, in Kalamazoo, at Western Michigan's performance. So, I think they got a pretty good shot. Their recording is awesome. Leading the group, Marcus Stanish on tuba, Eli Zaksik on French horn, Quinton Riggs again on French horn, Ben Burke on euphonium, and Yohai Carota on tuba. Please give them another round of applause. Picture time.
Mr. Lampman, when they win that first Grammy, can we hold it, please? When we, when they win that first Grammy, I'd like to at least hold it.
Yeah, head over there. Let's see how we do. We'll be okay there. Head over. Hate to disrupt the regular routine. That's, that'll work, yeah. Can we kind of stand in front of the television? This works, though, at an angle. This is good, Steve. This is good at an angle. It might actually be better at an angle, to be honest. Yeah, shift. Two steps that way. Now, it's kind of like this. Okay, yes, but I can't see you. So, adjust. Find a window. Find a window. Keep finding a window. There, now I can. There you go.
Now we got it. Here we go.
Can I see your faces? Tim, there you go. Perfect. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
While they're settling out, a member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note, the students will be given priority to speak on any topic. First public participation portion of the meeting is limited to one half hour normally and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of this agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion cannot be used to make personal attacks against board member, district employee, or student. We have three speakers this evening, three parents, and I'll just list the names so you can all be ready, Susan E. Step, Amy Teslin, and Corey Belote, in that order. Thank you. What happened to your cards? Okay. I believe you've all spoken before, so you know the dealio. Thirty seconds warning with the yellow card. Thank you, Susan. At your leisure. The time starts when you start.
Okay. Good evening. As you know, I'm Susan E. Step, former board member. I reached out to the full board today regarding concerns with the board versus district policy process. This past month, I was appalled to discover that Policy two-two-six-four, non-discrimination, anti-harassment, and non-retaliation, including Title IX and Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, is not in the SAS policy manual and is not being used. The board adopted this policy on December tenth while I was on the board, two thousand and twenty-four, and there hasn't been board action since to rescind this policy. This specifically is a policy that was adopted and it's thrown, and it uses a Neola policy number. So, okay. Additionally, I discovered that Policy two-two-six-six, non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities, has been revised in the SAS policy manual on January tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The last time the board approved these revisions was September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and there hasn't been board action to revise this policy since, even though it's revised in the book. Technical corrections also needs to come through the board. During the last board policy committee meeting, I brought this up to the committee's attention. It was confirmed that Superintendent Latch and Buddy Yonkey, that he made the decision to not add or use Policy two-two-six-four, which was what we approved in December, and that the Policy two-two-six-six removed language that the board approved in September, two thousand and twenty-four. This was confirmed. Committee is aware of it. These personal actions are not legal, legally compliant. Neither of these policies can be revised or rescinded without board action. It would have to be recommended to the policy committee and/or the board and go through the board's legally compliant process for it to be revised or rescinded. Again, technical corrections count as well. The public and the board deserves to know what the board, what board policies are being followed in the district at any given time. Also, the new Thrun policy that is currently not being used costs time and likely additional money to the district as it wasn't a policy through our policy provider, Neola. This needs to be a priority. You all have the rest of my email. So, specific to the agenda tonight, policy, the trans policy, just to make it quick, is not, was proposed, a proposed revision by the superintendent in the district and are not based on legally required opinion and was a suggestion that the superintendent said can be considered or not. So, I want you all to think about, let us know. Answer the question, please.
Thank you, Ms. E. Step. I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'll send you a follow-up email because I want some clarification on twenty-two.
I'd like clarification tonight during the discussion. Thank you.
Susan, Susan. I was talking, sorry. I didn't want to talk over you, and I didn't want you talking over me. So, thank you. Oh, Amy Teslin, followed by Corey Belote.
Oh, there we go. Thank you, Celine Area School Board members. I wanted to thank you and the district for your support for all of our students in this time of uncertainty in education and in our society. We have so many teachers, community members, administration, administrators, I should say, board members firm in their commitment to human rights for all students and people. We are lucky. We have a strong and loving community. I encourage our district to stand strong in upholding our excellent policies, especially with respect to our transgender and non-binary student policy that's up for revision tonight that allow all students to be free, safe and free to learn. It will take courage, but you have the overwhelming support of our community. And just in conclusion, Happy Arab American Heritage Month, Autism Awareness Month, and Deaf History Month.
Thank you. Corey, but there she is.
Corey Belote, and I am here on behalf of myself and my son, Owen Belote, and I wanted to second what Dr. Latch was saying about Mr. Lampman. Thank you very much. Mr. Lampman is an inspiration to kids, and in fact, in particular, my son Owen wants to be Mr. Lampman. And he is going to Eastern in the fall. He auditioned and has been accepted into the music program, and in a couple of weeks, he auditions for the marching, the drum line in the marching band. And that is all because of Mr. Lampman. So, again, thank you so much. Thank you.
Corey, what's his instrument? I'll look for him if he's in.
Percussion. He wants to be snare, but cymbals could be okay.
All right. Thank you so, thank you. I have two brief announcements as board president. The first is to jump on top of what you said, Amy Teslin, that this, just to recognize that this is indeed Autism Awareness Month. And the second equally important announcement is that as of four o'clock this afternoon, the posting for the position of superintendent of Celine Area Schools closed, and I'm delighted and terrified to announce that there were twenty-five applicants, and we will be screening those, and in a future board meeting, we will be determining who is coming in for an interview with us, or which of those candidates are coming in. It's not going to be one, it's going to be several. Thank you. Pardon me. Revisions approval of the agenda. Items can be deleted or removed from the agenda at any time, and the agenda has to be approved before proceeding further. There was one change brought to my attention that I'd like to put up for vote. I'd like to move on the consent agenda, item fifty-five, sorry, it's Policy fifty-five-hundred, which is fourth from the bottom. I'd like to remove that from the consent agenda to, just to have a quick discussion, quick update on that. And that's the only change that I would like to make. Is there anything that anyone else needs to add, change? It's on the last, second to last page of the many, multi-page agenda. Fifty-five-hundred. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I will make that motion.
Darcy Burwick makes the motion? Brad Gerby? Was it, was it Brad? Well, let's do it right. Tim Austin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. It's six-zero tonight. We have missing one board member and one student representative. Sorry about that. So, student showcase, it's all you. Kate Sonnanday.
For this week's student showcase, we are honoring DECA, and Ava Strip, and Kieran Sankran are here to talk about what we do in our exciting trip to Nationals at the end of the month.
Thank you. If you see the green light on, you're good. Green is good.
Okay, thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Ava Strip, and I'm the president of DECA.
And I'm Kieran Sankran, and I'm a vice president for DECA.
So, we're excited to tell you a little bit more about DECA and what we do. Can you go to the next slide? Okay, so DECA's mission statement is that we're focused on preparing emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. So, we focus on primarily these four career clusters, and essentially, DECA is a competitive business organization that gives students and essentially, DECA is a competitive business organization that gives students real-life experience in the business world. And it's much more just beyond the competitions. It's much more beyond the competitions and conferences. It's also a great community where you build connections with people in the industry.
So, our chapter at Celine High School, we have 56 members, all made up of juniors and seniors, and this is a five to 10-member increase from last year, and it's been steadily going up over the past couple of years, which is great. We meet twice a month to go over various things, mainly preparing for upcoming competitions, whether that's practicing role plays or just going over details so people are prepared. Then the other reason we meet is to prep for our community events that we're a part of. So, some of these events, this year, we had a sock in a food drive where members were encouraged to donate socks or canned food, and all of these proceeds went to Celine Area Social Services. And so we thought that was pretty successful. This is another year where we helped out at the craft show. So we're helping set up, directing people, and we've been doing that for a couple of years now. And then this year, we hosted a cornhole tournament for the first time, where the money we made helped to support students wanting to go to our state competition. And I think that was pretty successful. We're hoping to continue that in the future.
Okay, so we have three competitions for DECA. The first one, all of our members attend, which is districts in January, and that's at Eastern Michigan University. And then in March, we go to states that's in Detroit, and that's for a weekend. And then, in just a few weeks, we're going to Internationals in Orlando. Okay, so there are many competitive events that you can do in DECA, but most people participate in a role play. So essentially, a role play is you're given a business situation right when you go to the competition. So if you're in a team, which is you and one other person, you're given 30 minutes to prepare, but if you're individual, you're just given 10 minutes. So you're given a specific business situation, depending on which event you're in, and then you have to come up with a marketing plan and solution, and then present it right after that, after you get your situation. So it's really good to think on your feet and just develop skills that will help you in your future career and college plans. Like I mentioned before, there's tons of different categories that you can participate in, which I think is a really special thing about DECA, because there's truly something for everyone that they can be interested in. So, for example, some of our members, one's in automotive marketing. There's retail and fashion merchandise, financial services. Kieran's in business law and ethics. I'm in travel and tourism. And there's so many more. There's probably 20 to 30 different events you can participate in. So that's a really special thing about our role plays.
If you can go back to that other slide, sorry. So, some other things that you can do that are a part of DECA are written events, which is another way for us to get members to the state competition. So what that means is they can write a 10-page paper about a variety of different things, and then they're able to present this paper and be judged on this paper at the state competition. So I think we had around maybe 20 members this year who got to do that. And then the school-based enterprise as well. That's a longer paper. It's anywhere from 25 to 50 pages. So we both wrote papers this year. Mine was about food, and then hers was about retail merchandise. And that helps us go to the international competition in Orlando. Yeah. So, the first competition for us every year is the district's competition. This is hosted at Eastern Michigan, which is great, because it gives students an opportunity to go to a college campus and see what that's like a little bit. And then this year, we were very successful. We were able to send 44 members from the district competition to states.
So then states, like I mentioned before, is a little bit longer. It's a whole weekend, so we leave around 10:00 on Thursday and then return close to dinnertime on Saturday. So, within the weekend, there's so many things to be involved in. The students do participate in their role play and then/or written event, depending on what they qualified for. But beyond that, we also have opening and closing ceremonies, where 5,000 Michigan DECA members are all in a room together, and it's really special to be able to see students who are just as passionate about business and being a leader. And it's really just a cool opportunity to network with different people from around Michigan. And then this year, we also went to a Pistons game, which was super cool. Everyone in Michigan DECA came, and it was really special to see them all there. So our chapter is very successful this year at states. We got three chapter awards. First, we got the Give Me Five Award, because we increased our membership by at least five new members. And then we also received the MDA Award. We were one of, I think, 10 schools out of around 200 to receive it in Michigan, because we raised over $2,000 to support the Muscular Dystrophy Association, which is DECA's main fundraiser. And then we also qualified for the Thrive Chapter Campaign. So basically, because we participated in all of those community events that Kieran mentioned earlier, there's a whole checklist we completed, but we qualified for the Thrive. So we get to send two people to a business conference at Internationals because of that. And then also, we have 13 members who qualified for Internationals, which is much higher than we've had in the past. Last year, we only had six members, and in the past, it's been around that as well. But because of sports and other events, we only have 11 that will be attending in a few weeks.
Okay, so coming up is our International Conference, where we get to spend a week in Orlando. And this is going to be really cool, because we're with around 20,000 other DECA members, business professionals and alumni as well. So we'll get to, you know, meet up with people all across the country, even across the world, who are also very interested in business. So that'll be a great opportunity for us. And it's another chance for us to present our role plays, to practice what we've been working on, whether that's role plays or the SBE papers. So that's a great opportunity for us. And then, we're also lucky, we get to spend a night at Universal Studios, and they close the park off to just DECA members. So that'll be really fun.
So yeah, we're super excited for Internationals. At Internationals, I'll be doing the retail SBE paper, and then Kieran will be participating in the role play for Business Law and Ethics. And Kate will also be going. She is taking the food paper for the student, school-based enterprise project. So DECA is a super impactful organization in many ways. Obviously, just the community and connections you build with people all around you. It's super special to be in an environment with kids who are just as passionate about business from really all around the country and all around the world. It really allows us to get real-life experience that we can use in the future. For me personally, when I joined marketing my junior year, I didn't really have an idea of what I wanted to do in the future. And my teacher suggested that we join DECA, and DECA has really just allowed me to see something that I enjoy so much. And now I want to pursue marketing in the future. So I'm planning on majoring in marketing management next year. And I'm really just grateful to have gotten to participate in DECA, because just giving me such great experiences and realized, made me realize something that I'm so passionate about.
Yeah, and then for me, I always knew I wanted to do something with law. And so having the opportunity in DECA, which is primarily a business thing, to still have some law aspect in my Business Law and Ethics category, that was really cool and very helpful for me. And then outside of that, it just helped me build confidence in public speaking, problem-solving, and really thinking on the spot. Also collaboration, because you're working with a partner. So yeah, it's helped me build a lot of really helpful skills that will help me throughout my life.
And then we also interviewed a few of our past DECA members for some alumni stories for a project we did earlier for our Thrive Campaign. So Grace Warren, she graduated last year. She was the DECA co-president last year, and now she's at Ohio State University. And she actually started the Ohio State DECA organization right there. So I think that's super impressive. She also said that she's learned a lot of leadership and communicative skills through DECA, and she's really glad that she participated in it. And then also Drew. Drew was also on the board for DECA last year, and now he's swimming at Youngstown State University, and he's a part of their social media club. So he's a really big leader in that, and he said his time in DECA really helped him prepare for what that would be like. So I just think it's super special that DECA has given us all of these memories and things to look on for the future, and we're really grateful to our advisors and just that we've gotten the opportunity to participate in this.
Well, that's great. Ava, Kieran, thank you so much. I'm wondering if any of the board members have a question to ask you and possibly even Kate, since you're somehow affiliated with them. Oh, Jason.
So you said that membership went up. What do you attribute more participation? Or how do you attribute more participation?
We've really just been encouraging more people to join. So, one, at Celine, it depends school to school, but we require, you have to be in at least some type of business class to be in DECA. So I'd say almost every member is in marketing, but also some members will be in like general business or accounting. So this year, we also went and presented to the accounting classes about DECA and got some of them to join as well. So that's been super special, because they more were focused on BPA, which is Business Professionals of America before. But now, we've just been trying to combine more people who are interested in the business field into DECA.
I also know, right now, DECA is just open to juniors and seniors, but we are working to open the club to sophomores who are also in a business class. So hopefully, you know, in the coming years, we'll be able to expand the club even more.
Well, that sounds like you have a solid marketing strategy for Mr. Gerby.
Funny Jason would say that. My kid's one of those. So he is one of the people that joined, and I guess I just have a couple of things. Number one, I love DECA. I was really fortunate to be able to be a national finalist in Anaheim, got to go to Disney World. It is really awesome being at Internationals. And it gives me one thing in my house I can one-up my kid on. Like, he's smarter than me, he's a lot of things, but I can always say that. Until he tops me. But I want to thank you guys for creating such a fun environment. And I want to thank your advisor, advisors, right, for creating a fun environment. My son talked about being downtown a couple of weeks ago and how incredible that was and what a great experience. And so, kudos to you guys for just creating something that the kids want to be a part of. And my kid, like, he was just fired up and so happy to just be with you guys and to do that. So, yeah. And so I always ask this, is there anything that you can point out that the board, that we could do to support your program? We're promoting right now, but is there anything that we can do to help you?
I mean, I think we're pretty good. Yeah, the only thing would just be finances, because it is pretty expensive. But, I mean, I'm sure that's with everything, but we feel pretty supported by the school, and yeah, we're grateful for everything.
Well, thank you for everything you guys do, and your advisors.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Yay, big hand. Thank you. Good job. Well done. Nicely done. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kate. I'm looking ahead at our action items. We have several, some of which will test my ability to read numbers. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one 2026 F750 gas regular cab from Brondas Ford Incorporated at a cost of $72,227.50, and a 10-foot by 96-inch stainless steel dump box from Cobra Truck and Fabrication at a cost of $47,426.66, for a total of $119,654.16, as submitted by Rex Clary, Director of Operations. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is that Tim?
And I'll support it.
And Gerby? Yes. Any comments? Shimmer it up to the microphone once again.
So this is a critical piece of equipment for our grounds department during snow removal. It was, it was before Jim Salt retired, I think, four years ago, or before COVID, probably, no. He said it was a critical piece that needed to be replaced in the next two to four years. Rick Spicer repeated that, and then this last winter, we really saw it starting to deteriorate, with the cab rusting through, the gas tanks rusting through, and the box starting to rust through. So this is the last big piece of equipment we need to be ready for next winter. And with the lack of pushes this year, I'm going to say we pushed twice. We didn't push a lot. When we say pushed, pushed snow, we salted for the ice. We didn't have a lot of accumulation, which is a good thing. This is a critical piece that we need for our grounds department moving forward.
I heard that knock. Any questions or?
I just want to note that the truck that we're replacing is 23 years old, right, from 2003, so.
Yeah. Thanks for doing the arithmetic for us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody's opposed? Six oh. Thank you so much. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the furniture purchases for the Celine High School STEM addition as recommended and provided by King Scott Associates, totaling $291,023, as submitted by Rex Clary, Director of Operations. And the payments are going to go to VS America, $30,730.80, NBS Commercial Interiors, $29,653.46, Drew L., $4,458.67, ISCG, $83,543.53, KI, $126,142.6, and a 6% contingency of $16,471.71. Thank you for those accurate numbers. All in, do we have a motion, please? Nobody likes furniture?
I move to approve the purchase of the furniture. I'll second.
And Darcy, you're going to have to repeat the entire.
I'm sorry, Berwick.
Thank you.
So just a big shout out to Cara, Instructional Director, Executive Director of Instruction, Cara Davis, working with her team, with Kelly Woodman, with robotics, having them work with us on this design piece, King Scott, Dana McCollin, Lori Cassie, as well as Science Olympiad. They all had a, we collaborated with all groups. We feel this is a package that's going to benefit the students and be flexible for day use for our other students as well in the flex area, as well as the robotics and Science Olympiad in the evenings, so.
Great. Questions from the team?
I had one quick question. In the letter, it's referenced that there's going to be asbestos removal this summer.
That is in the middle school.
Okay.
Yes. And that will be, bids are due tomorrow. It's mostly pipe fittings. We do have some tile, which we did in 2017, 2018, during the Safe, Warm, and Dry Bond, but we do have, we're attacking other spaces this summer, one of them being the band. Oh, Mr. Latman left.
Yeah, I guess I kind of jumped the gun from furniture, sorry.
Any others?
This is high school media center, the new STEAM center, sorry. And STEAM center.
That's right. We'll just hold that answer in abeyance for the next question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? No opposition. Thank you so much. The third action item this evening is to approve the purchase of middle school auditorium and music storage equipment in the amount of $103,306.80, including a 5% contingency fee from Wegner Corporation, as submitted by Rex Clary, Executive Director of Operations. And this will be purchased through the Omnia Purchasing Cooperative. So we get a little discount there. Do I have a motion, please?
Some.
Tim?
Berwick, second.
Berwick supports. Thank you.
So this is for the existing, the old high school space that I'm sure Mr. Latman was a teacher in that space for a period of time, if he's been here 28 years. But Dave Walters, Ron.
Those of you not watching the stream, Mr. Latman re-entered the building.
John Mason, Bob Phillips, and Nate Latman. I mean, these storage areas are ancient. They have not been updated since the school was built in the late '60s, early '70s. They've been cobbled together with two-by-fours and screws and nails, and it's not safe. And we need to do a phrased approach to these areas, and we're working through that. So we're doing a storage room for percussion, a storage room for the band, and then a music organization piece for the choir group. And I want to thank Brian Puffer at Community Education, who helped us replace the stage floor last summer, and now he's going to help us with this new band shell, which is still original to the building, from what I've been told, and through community ed in the space at the middle school auditorium.
Excellent. Oh.
And asbestos will be done as part of the demo on this. And that tile will be replaced.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing no opposition. Thank you so much. And we have, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the recommendation as submitted by La Cole Planners to award Celine High School Roof Integration Solar Roof Mount Solar Array Installation Bid to Yellow Light Incorporated in the amount of $1,152,461.82. Motion?
Berwick.
Thank you.
I'll support it. Gerby.
Gerby seconds it. Thank you.
No golf balls.
Say again?
No golf balls.
Don't go there. Don't go there.
No golf balls.
No golf balls, right.
This is the labor piece to install the solar panels that are currently locked up into our storage containers. We are at budget on this project. We're looking great on this project. We should have the middle school operational sometime this, hopefully this next week, and have that working. Um, with the roofing bid and the solar installation bid, everything's moving as scheduled to have this solar array substantially completed in the early fall. Again, working with DT has been a challenge, uh, but we hope to have it working, this solar array working in a much smoother and quicker, uh, timely fashion to have it maybe on before early spring of next year at the high school.
I do have one quick question. Um, at Western Michigan University, one of their main buildings is solar array and everything. And they have a really nice readout, a display of how much energy is, is coming in through the solar panels. Um, are we planning anything like that?
We are. Um, and we actually, we're going to have it also, it could be student-led. I met with a student today who might be a part of that process. Uh, Amaresco, who is our, um, project manager for this, or a project engineer. Um, we've talked about different options. We need to get this operational before we can plug that in and start taking a look at that. Uh, but we do have a student that's very interested in working with that, uh, with, and to develop what it looks like from the student's perspective and working with the teaching staff as far as curriculum. Uh, he had a lot of great, uh, great ideas this morning. Former, his parent, his mother is an educator here in the district. Um, and he's working at U of M in a test lab this summer, so.
Well, I hope, uh, that student, if things progress properly, I hope that student can, uh, give us a quick walkthrough of what you create.
It would be great to do that.
Any questions for the team? Nope, from Lauren? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right. Thank you very much, Rex. I don't know if you're still on deck for the next one. Uh, one more. This is fun. Uh, entertain a motion, please, to, uh, approve the recommendations from Clark Construction Company in conjunction with King Scott Associates. That Seline Area Schools enter into contracts with the recommended trade contractors as listed in Bid PAC number four for the Seline Middle School Interior Renovations Project. The payments will be made as follows. Clark Construction, seven million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Is that eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, Betty Yankee? Okay, that, we'll fix that comma. Uh, Clark Construction, a hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve for the field. King Scott Associates, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred for construction, design, and reimbursables. King Scott Associates, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty for FFNE design. Oops, design. Do we have a motion from?
Burwick.
Brad Gerby?
Second, Burwick.
Seconded by Dee Burwick. Thank you very much. Any comments about that?
It's going to be a busy summer.
Now, they've already started the work, haven't they?
So this is for the interiors. The exterior has started, um, at the high, at the middle school for the Liberty Sports, Liberty Middle School Athletic Complex. This is all for the interior work. Um, but to that point, we've already done shop drawings and some middles for like long lead tight ends that were need for special ed because we are, we'll be remodeling four classrooms that will open in August of this summer. Um, so those submittals have already been submitted. As soon as we get the contracts done tonight, approval, we'll get those going and make sure we have the doors to put on the new classroom, to put on the classrooms. And we're ready to go.
Rex, can we expect, um, to see increases in prices? Because this is pre-tariff, are you concerned?
We don't know what we don't know. Um, we feel like, on the furniture side, they feel like getting this in this month will be in good shape. They have to honor their quotes. Um, so, you know, the chairists weren't there, but they still have to honor their quotes. And it could come down to that contingency piece as to what, how we get through this. If there's certain items that they want to withdraw or, um. During COVID, we did the same thing. There were times where we had to pay extra for certain items.
So I was just, the subtotal is nine million, five hundred and eighty-four, four seventy, and our approved amount from the bond is seven million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and six.
So the, we had, we did have to go into escalation. Um, we are using that fund as part of, part of, to fund part of this project. And because we increased our footprint and scope of work. Um, we had to move special ed up to the, we moved it to the central of the building, closer to the center of the building. Um, so we're actually touching more square footage. So we did increase our budget and we used some of that money from escalation to cover that difference.
Sorry, can you just explain escalation? Sorry.
So there's, uh, we had three phases of the bond, phase one, two, and three. They're all sixty million. And then, but part of that was there's the cost, and there was eleven percent factor into the first, second sixty, and eighteen percent into the third series of, of funds. And so that, we, we're still using our base budget, but we have that money, that funding, to kind of offset the escalation of price or added scope. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was, um, quite excited to see how fast things were moving, going back to the earlier question. Uh, with the construction, we not, we, we attended the groundbreaking in, in the building one day. And the next day I was out for a little run and all the fences were gone. And the, the baseball field had been basically taken apart. And so you guys are fast.
And when we took, we took a tour to the new steam center and weight room, today I took the teachers into the weight room. Painting finishes are going in. Flooring will be within probably two weeks. So that's, that project will, the weight room will finish up, I'm thinking in sometime in early July. And then the steam center will be sometime in early August.
Great. Looking forward to a tour. How much does the average teacher bench? Uh, okay. Um, any other questions, please, for the rest of the, nothing? All right, please, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition. Thank you so much, Rex, for your time and diligence and for keeping us under budget.
Thank you.
Uh, Kara Davis. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the textbooks and associated ebook digital licenses for kindergarten, first, and second grades from the University of Florida Literacy Institute, uh, as submitted by Kara Davis, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Burwick.
Darcy Burwick says, me, please.
Second, Tizides.
JT, thank you so much. Oh, there you are. What can you tell us about this, uh, UFLI?
Uh, it's Ufly, actually. And so that will become a household name, hopefully, after, uh, we hopefully get approval this evening. It's a tribute to an incredible effort on the part of, uh, Jen Nelson, Caroline Stott behind me, and all of the teachers who have, uh, made an effort to look at a variety of different resources related to best, um, really literacy curriculums and pilot these in their classrooms, try them on, participate in lab sites, participate in professional development, um, and learn along the way as to what shifts the district needed to make over the course of the last three years. We've been really well positioned to move into this next step, which is a cohesive, shared curriculum, kindergarten, first, and second grade for all three buildings. Currently, we do not have a shared curriculum. Um, while there are pockets of similarities, we're not necessarily, um, providing an equitable access for all students in all classrooms in those grade levels in all three buildings. So we're really excited about this opportunity. Um, it does come under the bid threshold, or under the threshold. Um, so we're really looking for approval of the curriculum, the Ufly curriculum tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Well, oh, Lauren?
I've been learning a lot about the science of reading.
Great. That's an expert's behind me.
I know. We talked about it. I am like, it's just been so interesting. Um, and I really, I looked a little bit at Ufly and was pretty excited about it. And, um, but the one part I didn't get to really look at, and I wanted to ask you about tonight, were the ebooks, just because, um, I just wonder how much screen time you expect our K through three learners to be participating in.
It's, um, the, the Ufly product, which Jen's going to explain a little bit about the process in our presentation this evening. Uh, while there is online learning material for, through slides, to, to actually witness it in action, you're seeing a high degree of student engagement. Teacher direct instruction, student engagement around the letters, manipulations, like them voicing, practicing, uh, using hand gestures. So there's quite a good balance. There's no ebooks per se, um, in there at all. It's just part of the language around the policy that says you're approving those things. So that curriculum doesn't include ebooks. We use decodables.
So I, I myself have done a little bit of research into this because this is a really pet thing for me too. And, uh, one of the things that I've really been excited to hear about from the people that I've inquired with is that this is an additional tool for our teachers and it'll supplement the, the good education we're doing and what have you. And then the other thing is that everyone I've talked to recently has said a focus on phonics-based literacy is like, what the research is currently saying is absolute best practice. And so I, that gives me lots of excitement to approve this program for that reason.
And this will be our tier one curriculum, so every teacher will be using it with their students.
Yeah, and I love that piece too. So, thank you. And I want to also say to like the people, like the, the professional development, like, you know, like there will be a learning curve that comes along with it and everything that goes. But like, hey, this is good. And I know we'll do incredible things.
Thank you.
Hearing no other questions, let's put this to a vote. Please, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No opposition. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I know we'll hear from you in a bit later. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the closed session minutes of March eleventh for the purpose to consider security planning to address existing threats or, uh, or prevent potential threats to the safety of students and staff under section eight K. For number two, the superintendent evaluation under eight A. And number three, to discuss matters under attorney-client privilege that are exempt from disclosure pursuant to state and federal law under section eight H. Our secretary, Darcy Burwick, for those of you who are new to this, will be handing out the closed session minutes, which we will review and then vote on them. But first, I'd like to have a motion, please. That would be Tim Austin.
Second, Tizides.
Jason Tizides, thank you. And thank you, Darcy, for preparing these. So please, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? No opposition. So, thank you very much for the minutes, once again. Uh, we have one scheduled report. I'd like to call up Kara Davis and her crack team uh, from the, uh, learning, teaching and learning team, sorry. Crack participants of the teaching, what do we call you guys?
Tilt.
Tilt?
But that was a new one. Thank you. Wonderful. Good evening, board. Um, as trustee McVeigh said, I'm Kara Davis. I'm the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And I'm joined by Caroline Stott and Jen Nelson. He'll be introducing themselves momentarily. Uh, we are appreciative of the opportunity to provide a brief update. Uh, that is our mid-year report to complement our annual report that we give every fall. You'll be happy to know we're at about seven slides this evening. And, um, it goes without saying that the information that we're sharing in this report reflects a huge body of work, um, in supporting student success across the district. And that is possible, this positive progress is possible because of the dedication and expertise of our teachers, paraprofessionals, literacy tutors, EL tutors, building administrators, and members of the teaching and learning team who aren't here this, tonight. And of course, furthermore, tonight is meant to be a highlight of information um, around our district goals and action steps, as well as related outcomes. And it certainly does not, if you're seeing one of these reports for the first time, reflect the full scope of work and accomplishments on behalf of all of our students and staff. So to orient the audience and the new board members, our district follows the State MyKit process in terms of district continuous improvement and has worked to create a cohesive and consistent system of improvement across the years that we can lean into and trust and build upon, so that we can sustain the positive impact, um, for our students. And what we'd like to do tonight is review the process of that and then cover the two main goals that we have as a district, um, at the state level, and then share some of the highlights of the action steps that we've taken, as well as some of the things that we can celebrate, and then considerations for next steps. So in terms of our, our process, we look at our continuous improvement cycle truly as that. This is at the time of the year right now where we're in what we consider quarter two, but it's sort of our end of year where we're wrapping up and reviewing all of the data and considering next steps. How well are we accomplishing the goals that we have set out to achieve? How are the building level strategies and action steps working? And what are we seeing in terms of student outcomes and needs? We're monitoring a lot of data internally, um, through a, a number of different assessment points, as well as taking into consideration, um, any of the anecdotal evidence we've seen across time. Um, and so we reflect on those. We work with the different building level teams. We work with the administrators, um, and the teacher leaders. And we start to set our sights on, um, any adjustments that need to be made for the upcoming year. Um, and obviously, in June, we'll be gathering the end of the year data and then compiling that and finishing up that picture, um, so we can make informed decisions. And then we start to reset and relaunch throughout the summer where we develop or refine the plan that we have in place. Um, our current plan has been in place for about three years and we've been making tweaks. So we've had the same goals for three years at this point in time. And then we tweak the action steps and building level strategies to be responsive to the local needs and the data that we're seeing. Additionally, we spend a great deal of time, starting right out of the gates in September, all the way through June, collecting data, analyzing that data. We've talked in the past about our data protocols that we have in place that our, uh, local teams are using, our building level teams are using in order to make decisions and monitor their own action steps. Um, and we do that, uh, throughout the cycle as well. Um, and pretty much you will see like twice throughout that year. And then that compiles, um, into the spring and then makes a decision, then we start all over again. So that's a little bit behind the scenes of the process itself. Um, so we're ready to dig into the first goal. And I'd like to share that one of our goals is an academic goal. And it focuses on the idea that it is our hope, our ultimate hope, that all of our students have access to the opportunity to achieve a mastery in the content areas as reported out in the different assessment systems that we have. Um, regardless of what subgroup they're in, so our diverse student body, regardless of what their background is, that they all have meaningful access to the curriculum, and then obviously, that opportunity to thrive and be successful academically. Um, Jen is going to turn, uh, talk through some of the action steps we've taken in order to get at this goal.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jen Nelson. For those of you that are newer on the board, this is my twenty-third year in Seline. I worked most of that time as a classroom teacher, sixth grade, seventh grade, and third. This is my fourth year in the role of instructional designer slash literacy coach. And I am going to talk a little bit, um, just about how we're meeting these goals with the work that we're doing with teachers. And that's mostly falling in two categories of curriculum alignment and content-specific PD. So curriculum alignment is our curriculum review process that we spend time with teachers in curriculum review, reviewing our curriculum. And we recently wrapped up two years in, um, elementary and secondary math and science. And one of the things that we find is that often when curriculum review ends, that's when the work starts for the entire department. And so this year, we, um, did a lot of different things with the entire elementary math and secondary math team and science team. So I'm going to highlight a couple of those. Um, first of all, in secondary science, one of the things named that was that teachers really wanted some NGSS science training for their department. The next generation science standards are a set of K-12 content standards designed to improve science by emphasizing deep understanding, hands-on learning. And so this year, teachers in secondary, um, science are participating in that PD throughout the school, um, school year. In secondary math, we have checked in with departments continuing to update our models um, for class sequencing, communicating to families about that course sequencing. Also, we made a big move in secondary, um, math in sixth through tenth grade of adopting big ideas, a new math curriculum. And so supporting teachers along the way, implementing that new curriculum that started this year. And the feedback has been really positive. There's always learning curves with using a new curriculum, but it's been really positive. In terms of elementary science, uh, the feedback, they also adopted a new curriculum, which you, you approved a cou- a couple of years ago. And feedback very positive and needing some, um, supports with some of our special needs learners. And so we're looking to make some of those, um, supports for them, actually, this summer, to make sure that our curriculum is inclusive for everyone. In elementary math, we determined that, um, some training that we did as curriculum review leaders, so the curriculum review team is a couple of teachers from every grade level, every building. Not every teacher, because we're subbing them out through the school day. We did some learning on foundational, foundational math practices during that time. And at the end of the curriculum review, it was decided that that would be beneficial for our entire K-five math team. And so this year, we have been working on that on all of our half-days and our building goal meetings. So we're actually wrapping that goal up this month with our last half-day coming up next week and building goal meeting at the end of the month. We've been working with a researcher and, um, uh, professor at the University of Texas. and professor at the University of Texas, Sarah Powell, who's been doing some training on Zoom and also coming in person to do some training on foundational math practices, problem-solving, multi-steps equations for fourth and fifth grade teachers. And so, that work came out of a completed curriculum review. Transitioning to the curriculum reviews that we just started this year, we are, K-2 phonics was one of them. We fast-forwarded that one, trying to take advantage of 35J money to use to purchase the new curriculum. And so, you just approved Ufly, which is going to be very exciting to all those participants. And our tension now is turning to how are we going to support teachers? What is the training going to be like this summer? What support can we offer them in the fall? And just to clarify, our teachers have always been teaching phonics. It's actually Steve and Cara, and Caroline's leadership from many years ago. We just weren't all teaching the same program. And so, phonics was taught, but it's really hard to support it when different schools are using different programs. And so, we are adopting the same program. Just a little clarification there. And then in 3.5, we also launched a 3.5 phonics where we're not necessarily teaching phonics in fourth and fifth grade. That looks more like morphology instruction and spelling. And we will continue that work in a second year this year. Typically, the first year of curriculum review is a lot of learning for all of us, making sure that we're up to date. What are the best practices in that subject area? Is there anything that we need to revisit as leaders? And then the second year, kind of like bigger shifts are made. And so, I expect that to happen out of 3.5 phonics. We're also reviewing secondary ELA. In that group, we've been really looking at different research on cognitive load, how much information kids can handle at one time, how we can really be thoughtful about attention span and focused teaching and engagement. So, again, doing some learning amongst the leaders. And in social studies, very similar. Social studies, we have been diving into the C3 framework, which is a framework around inquiry of teaching social studies through inquiry. So, we've been supporting teachers and making sure they understand that framework, showing them what that can look like in lessons. Next year, we'll transition to application of that in their curriculum. And then, our last one for curriculum review is early childhood. And that one, some key takeaways of that for this year are really connections amongst our early childhood programs. So, we have early childhood programs here at Liberty, but then we also have them at each individual building, and they rarely get time to talk to each other about like what's happening at Pooh Corner or our GRSP classrooms or ECSC that's here. How does that connect to our young fives teachers that are in the buildings and kindergarten? So, a big takeaway is just spend that connection of time together, learning what different programs are focusing on, how they organize things, what their curriculum is. And then, we have really looked at the research of what do early childhood learners need, and starting to turn our focus to like what does that mean about our curriculum? And how can we continue to work together to make sure we're creating a comprehensive early childhood program for our students in Celine? So, we've been busy. And in all of that, we're trying to like embed specific content PD into that in our leaders, but then ultimately to all of our teachers. And a lot of that is communicated in meetings, like we have tomorrow with cross-district meetings where we can get more voice in, because we really pride ourselves that these conversations and decisions are happening with teachers, not separate from them.
Hi, I'm Caroline Stout. I'm the MTSS coordinator for Celine Schools. And I'm really excited to have a pyramid here because some of you are new, so welcome. I bring pyramids. We have talked a lot about some of the things that we do for all students and for all teachers, the professional development, the ton of work that Jen has led and Tilt has led with curriculum review and alignment. And all of that really concerns tier one primarily, right? Tier one is what we do for all students, the really solid foundation upon which we can then build upon, because if we're to achieve this goal one, we need to make sure that we have a continuum of supports for students, including those who need a little bit of extra boost at some point in time. So, we've continued to layer onto that work, tier two and tier three supports, which all happen within general education that are sort of moderate to slightly more intensive levels of support. In this case, we're going to talk about academic areas and connect that with the special education supports that happen for students with IEPs and the EL supports that happen for students who are multilingual learners. As part of that, we have increased our collaboration. Tilt has been wonderful framework for us to really work across silos, to make sure that we're making that happen, to make sure that the supports for students who maybe have multiple needs or who are English learners but also might struggle with reading, really makes sense that they're aligned and that we have solid communication and collaboration among the staff. We've also looked at staffing and increased our staff, certified staff with the addition of GABO that supports students who are multilingual. And we've done a lot of work trying to bridge interventions from the lower elementary to middle elementary through the high school with things like one-on-one tutoring, a homework hive, and some strategic classes at the secondary level, which we're going to talk about in the next slide, Ben, if you don't mind. So, here's some celebrations. Sorry the font is small, but we had a lot to say. So, starting in kind of the younger kids, as Jen mentioned, there's been a lot of work with curriculum and systems focused on early childhoods. We're excited to have posted an early childhood supervisor position that's really going to be able to have a big impact for our youngest learners when they first come to Celine Schools. We have embedded the data protocol that I know we've mentioned to you guys before in more levels of our systems. It's not just something that we're asking teachers to review, to look at multiple sources of data to really understand student needs, but we're looking at that at the district level, at the building level as well, in all levels of our administration. In literacy specifically, I have the graphs, but I'm not showing them for the sake of time. We have seen some really nice growth in all grades K-8 since the fall, with in every grade based on the Acadian's composite and the percent of students who are scoring at least average on NWA, either maintaining at least 80% of students in those like low to no-risk categories, or improving the percent of students who are not at risk from fall to winter. In math, and also in reading, we've had the highest post-pandemic percentage benchmark in kindergarten so far, which is really exciting, because I know we've had a lot of discussion about the impact of the pandemic on some of those young kids. And so, we're really pumped about that. In math, in first and third grade, we have our highest percent of students who are at benchmark in Acadians. At benchmark, for those who are new in this term, is, means that they've met kind of the minimal expectation to not be at risk. So, benchmark is just the level that we want to look at to be able to predict that students are going to not need any extra intervention. It's based on longitudinal research, and it's a pretty solid measure. So, that's very exciting. We also have seen an increase from fall to winter in NWA scores across fourth through eighth grade with percentages about three to seven points increase. So, that's been really nice, too. We have no ninth grade failures in high school biology in try one. I was 10 last year, and that's really, really exciting. It's something Beth Russo has put a lot into. We've also added a strategies class specifically targeting ninth grade algebra. That's starting this try with Heather Malash and using EZCBM, which is an evidence-based tool to monitor progress. So, that's all new and exciting. And then we also have students who are participating in homework hive who are seeing lower failure rates, improved grades, and we have homework hive specifically for just math now, which is really neat. Next, Jen is going to kind of talk to us about what's on the horizon.
I'm going to add one celebration that didn't make it to the list because of space, but Lauren mentioned it earlier, is that in Celine, we've been focused on like making sure that teachers are aware of the science of reading really for the last four years. And after three years of that being our main focus in PD, we switched to math this year, but we didn't want to let that go. And so, one of the things that teachers really wanted to see is like, I just want to see models of that teaching in small group instruction versus whole group. And so, this year, we partnered with a researcher, a former teacher, Julia Lindsay, who's been doing lab sites at every building. We just did one today at Woodland Meadows, and tomorrow we'll be at Pleasant Ridge. We were at Harvest in the fall. And the really cool thing about the, that opportunity is that while we're able to sub teachers out, a few teachers from every grade level, to be a part for the whole day, it happens during teachers' planning. And so, like today, every teacher at Woodland Meadows gave up their entire planning time to watch her teach and model a lesson and then debrief. And so, we've been able to do that all three schools, just to deepen the level of moving from like knowledge to practice. So, one little more celebration. And then next, we mentioned the new phonics curriculum. So, really thinking about how can we support teachers in this being really successful, that they feel like they have everything they need, that they have training, that as they enter the curriculum and are using it and come up with roadblocks, that we're there to support them. We are looking at revising our report card to make sure that our report card is reflective of some of the changes that we've made in curriculum review. And then also looking at our math consistency and language and practice, really from elementary to secondary. One way that we've been able to start to address this is that when we are working with our staff developer from the University of Texas, she comes in for the full day, but we're only using her for a half-day. And we've been able to sub out some of our special education math staff to work with her in the morning so that we're getting common language between elementary and secondary staff.
Great. Another goal that we've had since we've started our journey with My KIP is a social-emotional goal. You know, our hope is to strengthen our social-emotional support models in order to provide the best social-emotional supports for our students, because we know that learning happens best when students feel safe, supported, and connected. This year, we have continued to strive to embed consistent SEL supports, whether it's via providing SEL lessons for morning meetings, advisory time, or during whole, building or whole group community meetings. That's one way we've addressed that. Our student success teams have been looking at what are called EWIMs, so these early warning indicators, such as attendance, behavior, discipline occurrences, grade, and assessment results. And then, of course, strengthening, again, as Caroline was mentioning earlier, for students who have a wider range of needs, providing specific student support such as check-in, check-out, some mentorship models. There's something called check and connect as a model at the high school, small group support for students in affinity groups, and then increasing family communication so that families have a good sense of what their students might need and what supports might be in place for them should they need it. So, we're feeling really excited about the moves that we have made as related to strengthening our social and emotional support models.
So, a couple celebrations around goal two. We are starting again with elementary. So, we're really starting to get that sense that the SEL lessons are more embedded in tier one, and that's been years in the, in the works, which has been great. We are looking at fourth grade and fifth grade as kind of different transition years because they're only heritage two years, but we're really seeing strength in relationships amongst students. And that is supported through the SEL lessons and the bridge disability work. The focusing on the middle school specifically, we've gone to advisory five days a week, focusing specifically on SEL lessons and promoting restorative practices. And we're seeing students report in higher numbers that they have a trusted adult in the school, which is great, and reporting less bullying. Our attendance data is also promising. That's another indicator, as Cara mentioned. We look at kind of EWIMs. Attendance is one of the indicators of just engagement. And we are seeing SMS data continuing to improve year over year, and at the high school, a steady improvement after last year that's continuing into this year, which is really great. Some of the next things might seem a little bit disconnected from EL or from SEL, but they're fully, fully integrated because the first one is, I mean, actually, we just had a follow-up to today. And we are really looking at technology usage guidelines. We already have cell phone policies, right, that are changed as of a couple of years ago. But even the governor mentioned this in her state of the state this past January, that the use of technology is something that we can really look at to improve and support student emotional and behavioral health. So, we are using a couple of things, a number of research studies, and an ed tech triangle that really outlines the uses of technology that can be transformative, that can be adaptive for students with disabilities to reach a broader audience and different types of learners, but really moving away from anything that could be either disruptive or, to be honest, that could be done without technology in a much more effective way. We are very mindful that in the pandemic, we had to move towards screens to just reach people, right? But now, we know that it is time to absolutely pull back and be really cautious, especially with our youngest learners about that amount of screen time. We know it's addictive. We know it's, it can be problematic. And so, we're doing a lot of work with that and excited about it. Why, what does a data warehouse have to do with this? Yeah. Well, we've had a lot of conversations with you guys about how some of those, some of the barriers to really building a tiered support model are just getting access to the data in real time so we can make real decisions. EWIMs is the perfect example of that, right? If we want to see in real time all of that data around attendance, around course failures when they're starting, around behavior, it's really important for us to have a tool that doesn't take 35 clicks and a lot of transformation to see the trends so that we can respond to those trends. So, we're really, really excited to be looking at a new data warehouse. We're down to probably two options that's going to replace illuminate, but allow us to, in a couple clicks, see some really powerful graphs, looking at attendance, looking at behavior data, but also hopefully pulling in some more indicators of SEL. This is a really tricky thing for us to do. We've also had conversations around specific things like using the student's preferred versus legal names. And these are barriers we currently have in our data systems, not in the people. We're all trying to do it right, but it's just the way that the data is flowing to us is clunky and problematic. So, I'm really excited about that. It's going to save me hours and allow us to focus more on supporting students. A couple other things to look forward to. At the high school, we're looking at increasing advisory to twice a week to allow for some student resource, sorry, some targeted support where teachers can meet with students who are starting to show maybe some course failure, but also who may be getting disconnected and have some of those conversations, build those relationships. And then, we are really looking forward to continuing to tighten those practices around SEL lessons and supports.
And this is information we had shared last year around this same time, but I wanted to give it another shout out. We have around $2 million right now that we've leveraged in grant funds in order to be able to support the progress on our district goals and to provide much of the information that you've been able to see here in terms of the curriculum hours, the work, the project time that teachers are taking on their own accord, to be able to compensate them in order to provide the resources in the classrooms to purchase the curriculum. It's all being funded, much of it is being funded either through 23G or 35J. 23G is the My Kids Back on Track grant. We were awarded approximately $385,000 for that. And then, 35J is targeted literacy, and we are awarded approximately $630,000 for that one. And then, we've got the 31AA mixed in there that gets at safety and wellness and does hit at some of our social-emotional goal action steps as well. So, I wanted to give that a shout out because it takes an army to lift that. Thank Miranda for all the work that she does behind the scenes, keeping track of all those numbers, as well as Betty, who's done an incredible job in terms of keeping us on track with all of our orders. So, thank you so much for your time. If you are new to the board, the teaching and learning team is on the next slide, which we refer to as Tilt. I'm just going to say that again. Tilt Teaching and Learning Team. And these are the folks who help support our teachers behind the scenes. So, it all is a system that we feel really proud of. So, thank you.
We do have one question from, at least one. Oh, looks like you were poised and ready to ask a question. Anyone else from the board? Brad?
Okay. Yeah. I have more like, just like, I know this was just an overview. Two things that are kind of continuous, continue to still be on my mind. We had talked previously about inputs and supports for students with dyslexia, right? And so, I just want to kind of make sure that like that's on the forefront still of focus for us. I don't know if you could give me a 30-second like, hey, yeah, celebrate this or that.
Yeah. And actually, I was reviewing my notes, and that's one of the things I was like, oh, I forgot to mention it. A lot of, if, I don't know, Ben, if it's easy to go back to slide three, maybe. The work that if, so, we've talked a lot about dyslexia, but not just dyslexia as a discrete diagnosis, but dyslexia as kind of a category of, thank you, types of reading difficulties, right? We talk about students with characteristics of dyslexia, meaning word-level decoding challenges. Our model has been predicated on that long before PA 146 was passed, but we were certainly excited to see, I was certainly excited to see that now there's legislation, even more legislation around MTSS and around this tiered level of support. So, yes, we are absolutely continuing to do that. A lot of what's in that law and a lot of what's in the A lot of what's in that law and a lot of what's in the Dyslexia Handbook that actually predated the law from MDE are practices that we've been doing as well. Screening students at regular intervals using evidence-based tools that get at some of those foundational literacy skills. Putting in place targeted intervention in addition to Tier One to focus on phoneme awareness and phonics. Monitoring progress closely roughly every other week and graphing that to make sure we're closing the gap when we're not adjusting those. Making sure that our tools at all tiers, instructional tools, are evidence-based. So our work with the Hexagon, what we talk about is the Hexagon Tool, our innovation, kind of review process, is one that's in line with that as well. So we are very much on track with that, but we are also continuing to promote professional development with that. As Cara mentioned, it ties in with some of the 35J pieces we've done, and as Jen mentioned, some of the lab visits that we've been doing. The, we are waiting a little bit further definitive guidance. In January 2026, we are supposed to be getting these kind of lists of approved assessments, list of approved curricula. And also, at that point, we'll find out, like, for instance, do we need to add a measure called Rapid Automatic Naming, RAN, which is one that we are ready to, that could be part of our Acadian suite. That's basically just saying, well, one of the characteristics of dyslexia that we're not currently measuring is students tend to have trouble with quickly naming things. And so that would be another indicator that we could add, and we might choose to do it even if it's not required, but I don't know if that-
Awesome. Yeah, like, you just now continued to, we're a destination district for education and for those kinds of things, and you just nailed that. And then you talked earlier about teachers who give up their prep times to be able to do professional development. Like, these things don't just happen, folks, like, they're really points of pride, so thank you for that. And then the last thing that's just always on my mind, and again, you might not have anything specific, because we're staying away from specific graphs, but just, I think a lot still about those kids who now would be fifth graders, now would be, you know, sixth graders, 2019, 2020, about just interventions and anything we might need to do, because our work still might not be done with particularly those individuals, right? Like, I just think of them a lot, so that's that. Thank you for your time tonight.
Looking around the table, I hear no questions, so thank you once again, TILT. And if we do-
I was just waiting to see, like, how fast you can-
If we do have questions that pop into our heads, I know we can reach out to any of you anytime, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have two discussion items tonight, updates from two committees, Finance Committee and the Policy Committee, and I'll let Brad start us off.
Yeah, I met with our awesome folks at 5 o'clock today, we had a pretty packed agenda, we covered a number of things. Let's see, I will give, try to keep this brief. We have a project that we're kind of taking on right now. Jennifer Stebbin, who I'm sure is going to watch this meeting from wherever she is. One of the things that we talk a lot, and she is always in my mind about this, is revenue generation. Well, one of the things that we came across was there's something called Michigan Class, C-L-A-S-S, and it may, may, we have to do our homework on it, and this is going to be a little bit of a process for us, so it's our recurring project. It might be a way for us to optimize some of our fund balance and some of the things to be able to utilize that money to be able to make short-term investment gains. And this Michigan Class, just to give you an idea, they generally have about a 4% return on investment, and it's only available to government entities, so it's only available to local governments, school districts, et cetera. And so it has a really good reputation, and it's really well, like, I think I read somewhere that like, no district or nothing, no one that has put money in it has lost money. Now, I'm not going to hold it to it, but, but, yeah, right? But like, it might be a way for us to generate 4% or so on money that is our fund balance, and we might be able to do some of those things. And then it actually kind of perked a discussion that Miranda shared with us about, we already kind of do this a little bit through, it's called MYLAF, the Michigan Liquid Asset Fund Plus. So even as the third year is the treasurer and stuff, I'm learning, I learned a little bit about MYLAF today and how we utilize some of our, we put some of our bond funds through there, and again, we're able to capture some of those things. And I guess what I would say mostly out of that is, Miranda, I again am assured that like, you're on it, and that's a way that we, again, take these bond dollars, right, and just maximize them as much as possible. So, so thank you to her for her commitment. And then here's another thing that Jenna, or that responds to her commitment. The next thing we talked about is with our Series Two bond sale, our S and P, our credit rating matters, right? And so we want to have, help me make sure, we want to have a high credit rating so that we can maximize our bond, or our borrowing ability at the lowest possible interest rate to be able to maximize the dollars that we actually put into things. And so, so that's that. And I will tell the seven of us, one of the things that makes us an attractive partner for doing those things is the fact that we do have a good, solid fund balance, right? So we're seen as being quote-unquote "less of a risk," right? And so one of the things that we might want to do, and the Finance Team will continue to talk about this, is we might even want to have some conversation as a board, so that we can like, maintain those kind of commitments, or we can go out to creditors and say, you know, our fund balance is something that is important to us, and maybe we come up with some kind of commitment or some kind of goal to say, hey, that we want to stay above this level so that we can remain attractive to creditors and lenders. So just, it's something that I'm kind of planting a seed on, that we might want to do as like, a long-term, like, thought process and a long-term thing, all right? We talked a little bit about the 25-26 budgeting process. We're hoping, right, you know, they're, they're starting to bring some information out, the Governor Whitmer is gonna, you know, want this per pupil increase. The House and the Senate will want a different, and they're starting to kind of hash out some of those details, and we're hopeful to get more information on that, and we're hoping for something that maybe even might be a little bit eas- I'm just going to speak for myself, that it might be just a little easier than what they did this past one. So like, where they decreased the, you know, percentages and then didn't put it on per pupil. So anyway, that's that. And then the last thing we talked about were some things that came up during, during the bond, you know, actions and items. We get dorky about things like aluminum for pickup trucks and some of that kind of stuff, so, there you go. Anybody have anything you want to add?
Brad, your next meeting will be-
All right, our next meeting, 5:13 at 5:00 PM.
Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce, so there were no questions for Brad? No, thank you, I'd like to introduce Lauren Gold, who will be leading an update on the Policy Committee.
So we last met, and we'll have a couple of policies that we're talking about tonight, but we last met on March 18th, and we reviewed Policy 8321, which is on the consent agenda tonight, which is just looking at the way we keep information secure, and it's a requirement of the Michigan State Police, so we talked about that. We also talked about some Neola updates, near and dear to my heart. There's new, a new option for kids with food allergies where epinephrine can be given through nasal spray versus only injectables. And so being on the ball with that, Karen Harvey had changed some of the language in our policy to say epinephrine delivery systems. So that is also going to consent agenda. And then she and I met about another policy update just regarding medication, and that's going to go on a future policy meeting to be discussed further. And then 8320 talked about keeping personnel files complete and is on the consent agenda tonight. We also had a discussion about potentially moving our policy manual or service from Neola to TRUUN, and President McVeigh presented about that. We are going to continue to look into that at this time. And so that was the past meeting, our next meeting is going to be April 22nd. I don't want to comment too much about the policy referenced in public comment tonight, except for to say that there were some changes made because the policy was revoked by TRUUN. And we will, I'll discuss further with the President whether that needs to, you know, be officially brought to the board for a vote of approval versus unofficially, I think that's something we're still working out. But the policy was the one that we debated in December and passed shortly thereafter while Betty was getting ready to post it. TRUUN themselves decided to bring back that policy since law no longer, the law no longer, it was no longer legally correct, essentially, in the way that it was written. So TRUUN had pulled it back, therefore, it didn't get added to the policy manual. But we can talk about it at a future meeting about whether that needs to come to the whole board.
Just to clarify, that's the Policy 2264 at all, all of the, there are like five subpolicies, so thank you. Sure, we have two discussion items, Policies 54, 5540 and 5517.02.
So it was, that was sort of a novice mistake by me. So it was, it is a Neola update, which we will sometimes just do because they're rather brief and Scribner's changes in consent agenda, but it was pointed out to me by a fellow trustee that there is quite a lot of addition of information. And I think, looking back, that probably Neola updates that particular policy pretty regularly, because I tried in the time I had to do a bit of a search as to, but we have not as a policy committee updated it along with Neola, so it looks like for us, like, a large chunk of information. So to be true to our intent of having the full board discuss items with more changes, then we decided it was no, not really appropriate for consent agenda, and we'll put it on a later agenda. I'm sorry for that error. Yes.
So we will mark 5500 dealt with tonight. Well, dealt, moved, tabled, tabled until a future meeting.
We're taking that out of consent, and we'll put it on a future meeting to discuss, as a discussion item.
We don't even need to vote on that, so it's just, we're going to table that until the next, a future meeting, thank you.
Give me just a second, because I'm pushing between policies, and I want to very quickly pull up 5540 for the first reading, just so I have it to reference while I'm speaking about it.
And we should all be doing that, probably. It's on page 28 of your manuals.
So, I have so many windows open now. Poor packet. Yeah. Okay. Tell me the page number again. Okay, sorry. I opened up a lot of policies, and then I lost the one that we're discussing for tonight, I apologize.
Happens to us all.
I'm getting through all of the quotes. Okay. So this was a policy that administration asked us to look at again. And this was brought to the attention that perhaps our policy wasn't in line entirely with how we were actually handling when child protective service teams come to the schools in order to interview a student. And sometimes that's for suspicion of abuse or neglect made with reports made by our dedicated teachers or administrators, and sometimes it might be outside concerns of abuse or neglect. It also sort of references a bit law enforcement coming to the school. And so we wanted to be clear on what the procedures would be, and also how we would go about, who would decide when parents were contacted. So for obvious reasons, if there is a concern that there's parental abuse or neglect, Child Protective Services does have the right to interview students without a parent present. But if that's not the concern, then our preference would be for parents to be made aware. And so I guess everyone can read the text, but this says essentially that it's up to CPS to let our administrators know when it is appropriate or not appropriate for parents to be involved, because sometimes our administrators will not know the details, actually, usually, they may not know any particular details. So that was changed. We did elect, though, to ask, we did elect after some discussion, so it says, "The building administrator shall ask the investigator whether they may contact the parents prior to the interview. Unless the investigator specifically requests that the parents not be contacted, the building administrator shall attempt to contact the parents prior to questioning." So we really wanted that decision as to whether or not the parents would be present, to be left to the Child Protective Services professionals, and then our administrators to kind of go from there. Does anyone have questions or comments?
Looks like you, did you use TRUUN's language on that? Is that what the TRUUN is up there? That's what you did, okay.
I'm not certain.
You got it. We looked at one part of this policy and felt that some of the guidance from TRUUN made more sense for this part in terms of how to implement it, and so added that part in. But then we, and then we took out some parts of the Neola part, so they didn't kind of contradict each other, and then kept some other parts of the policy that we debated, which were documenting the process. And I think we landed in a spot that we felt more comfortable with in terms of how to implement this. I've since gone back to the administration and given them the updated policy, assumed it was going to be supported, and then also the administrative guidelines, so we discussed how to implement it moving forward.
We really tried as a committee and as parents and educators to strike a balance between how if your student was involved in, you know, some sort of investigation, and you could be made aware, as a parent you would be, but also realizing that the protection of the student is our number-one priority. And so when you can't be, then we had other safeguards in place.
So there, there is a portion that is struck. The building administrator or designated guidance counselor will remain in the room during questioning of the student unless prohibited by the agency investigator. Is there a reason why that is struck?
So it was my understanding that the reason we took that out was because the administrator said that that was not what was specifically always happening, that sometimes it might be a teacher, or, and, so-
Well, I got to find it now. I looked through the rest of the policy, I didn't see anything that specifically talks about that. The reason I'm asking is even in situations like this, I believe that the student needs to, number one, have a witness to the questioning, number one, have a witness to the questioning and number two, have a, have a trusted adult from the school district in with the questioning, being a parent of a student that was improperly questioned. I can assure you that that, that should be a necessary component of this policy.
I question that as well.
Yeah, actually I do think we need that back in there. I'm not sure.
I questioned that as well and I thought that the answer we got was that the principals did not want it quite this prescribed, that it might end up being a teacher or something else. So I don't know if we want to consider putting in language that says a school repres, a tr, a school representative or I thi, I thought that was the answers we sort of got, that we had it in the administrative guidelines that someone would, because I said the same thing. And they were like, oh, of course we'd have somebody there, but it's not always us or the stool, school counselor. But if the board feels more comfortable, we could.
Well, the question is, is, is if CPS is actually leading the charge and stating that like they, they don't have the administrator in there. I think there was this balance between who's sort of running the investig, investigation. Is it CPS or is the district? And maybe we just need to go back and discuss this more with CPS officials to determine how that process is taking shape. Because what you're saying, Jason is trying to protect the student too and make them feel more comfortable about the process.
Exactly, so I think to Lauren's point, and it makes sense not to be a building administrator, but a lot of our students have, have a trusted adult in the schools. And a lot of our students have several of those adults in the schools that they can call on to be comfortable. If CPS is for some reason prohibiting a school employee to be present during the questioning, I'm not sure what we can do from a policy perspective, but I think, I think someone from the school should be able to witness the questioning, if not in the room.
I wonder if part of the reason for that is that our teachers may not want to be hauled into court as witnesses. So I don't, I, I think there was some level of discomfort that CPS really wants they come to do their investigation, is sort of in charge of the investigation, is that correct? So. I certainly see both sides of that.
I think we should go back to the, back to the drawing board a little bit though on this one to clarify some, some of these components. Specifically about that line, "The building administrator or designated guidance counselor will remain in the room during questioning of the student unless prohibited by the agency investiga, gator." So why don't we do that? I will go back and dig into that a little bit further as to why we would potentially strike that out versus adding something that does provide more support for the student per se during the process.
So as a, oh, do you have something to say, Brad?
I just want to offer my concurrence.
Okay, I was gonna say then, without objection, let's return this to policy pending further research. Is that acceptable? All right, great, thank you. Thanks for the catch, Jason.
Okay. So next up is fifty-five seventeen point oh two. The twenty-twenty Title IX did not list specifically gender identity and expression. Twenty-twenty-four did. Twenty-twenty is now back into effect. Therefore, as a basically technical change, the allusion to Title IX in our transgender non-binary students policy is no longer accurate. As a supporting, the policy is still intact. Students still have rights under Elliot Larson. But to cite our sources, as we would tell our students, that source is no longer one of the sources. So this was a change there. We also talked about adding Elliot Larson very explicitly as a reference, since we are referencing state law. And the only reason it's not listed there is because it is listed earlier in fifty-five seventeen and this is a subset policy of fifty-five seventeen. So.
Is there any harm in leaving it at the bottom as a cited?
I would, well, we'd have to add it at the bottom as a cited, but that was my intention and it didn't end up on there. But I'm, I think it's really appropriate to have the state legal guidance listed.
So add Elliot Larson to the bottom.
Yeah, in terms of like showing our, citing our.
There was, there were microphones off, so the statement is to move the Elliot Larson Elkra, as cool kids call it, to the bottom of that policy under cited, cited statute.
Correct.
Under references. And, and I would just like to make clear that regardless of whether or not we as a body add these references, rights still exist. Elkra is controlling, Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act is controlling. And I would actually say that we could leave in the first reference to Title IX. We do need to remove the reference to the letter to educators that's at the very bottom there. That was what was revoked under.
That's, that's been removed, isn't it?
Yeah, but the one above it, the Title IX is still, there's still good law in there. So I would recommend that we leave that, that we add Elliot Larson, just for consistency purpose. I think I, I am intrigued by moving to Thrun at some point because we do have a lot of policies that overlap and a lot of references that could be updated at some point in time. But it is listed above if that's, if that's an issue for someone else. The rights don't go away just because we don't list them there.
So, oh, finished?
Sorry.
No, I'm not rushing you, I'm just making sure you're finished. So what I'm hearing then, Policy Chair, is that we are going to un-remove the Title IX reference in the references.
Well, that's what Darcy is suggesting. I think we should get rid of Title IX in the, I mean, like we had said at the policy committee meeting, but she's asking for something different. We could discuss that, I think.
Well, again, Title IX is listed in fifty-five seventeen and this is a subpolicy of that.
And at least it does another policies though too, so.
I mean, you know, we're missing.
So, yeah, to clarify for some members of the community who have expressed, I went through every single policy that referenced twenty-two, that referenced Title IX. And the ones, I mean, the reason this one is coming up is because the, the specific change between twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty, there were a few, but it was mostly in the way assault claims are dealt with on a college campuses, which isn't applicable here. And the protections regarding gender expression and identity. So it wasn't anything nefarious in terms of what, it's just that the twenty-twenty-four guidelines for Title IX are no longer applicable. So I just, it, it was under some advice of counsel that we be accurate, so. I, I think there's a, I mean, Darcy and I have a good faith disagreement as to whether or not it really matters. And honestly, in terms of what is going to protect our students and, and how our kids' day-to-day life goes, I don't know how much, I mean, I don't feel all that strongly one way or the other if it's mentioned once or not at all in a policy because right now we still have state law protecting the rights of our transgender students. And I think what, you know, this isn't probably, it doesn't probably make a huge difference one way or the other whether Title IX is mentioned or not. And if it's mentioned once versus not at all, but.
So, so I guess, just clarify for me, so we're removing Title IX from this policy because of the gender, the change in the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty. But it still has meaningful, Title IX still has meaningful part, components to it. So, so I don't know if we have to, should remove it at all because I, I question then all the other policies in just cherry picking.
Well, we're not removing it from everything, we're removing it from point oh two. We're not removing it from fi, fifty-five seventeen, the parent part.
Yeah, so I just don't know if we even have to remove it from this one.
It's a duplicate in my, in my opinion, right? It's a oh-two, point oh-two is, is a subpolicy to fifty-five seventeen. And in there it references Elkra and Title IX, so that carries through. In some ways, you know, if you're not familiar with the policy, it's nice to have that additional reference if you want to go and do some nerdy research. Is it absolutely necessary? I don't think so. You know, I'd get into an argument that, you know, our rights still exist whether we list them there or not. I guess the thrust of this argument is that the content of the policy stays the same and it is covered under good law, be that state, federal and relevant case, case law. But the one reference to that guidance from the Department of Ed does need to come out, it's, it's been revoked.
And it, that was, you know, based on Thrun's advice to us. And so I just didn't want anyone to say like, oh, this policy isn't properly referenced.
For clarification, this was advice from counsel and it's a technical change specifically because of how we are referencing Title IX in this specific subcomponent, right? So it is not incorrect and to Darcy's point, it's already referenced in fifty-five seventeen, which carries down to all the subparts of the policy anyway. So since the reference to Title IX in this particular subpart of the policy is now incorrect. Or did I misstate that?
I'm sorry if I'm not being clear. So if you look at the references at the very bottom, we've got federal law Title IX. That is still relevant to some degree and in some parts. That last one was an interpretation from Biden and that has been revoked. And so truly that part needs to come out and the paragraph at the very beginning that references that should come out. Title IX is still relevant law. And so is Elkra and there, there are many other laws that are not referenced here that are also relevant. I love that things are referenced and people can refer to them. Again, we're, we're not taking away or granting any rights that aren't already provided. It's, it's, I, I enjoy that they are there.
Right, I, I was, I was trying to clarify because I, I believe the board's gotten a number of inquiries from the, from the community. I, yes, I understood what you said, thank you, so, so thank you for re, re-explaining it. I'm just saying the, the paragraph that we have in this particular part of the policy is now deprecated. So that is why that is removed. We're not removing Title IX from any of this policy, we're simply removing that paragraph because of how it's referenced. Thank you. That's perfect. I just wanted Darcy to agree on the record, so.
Wrap it up, so we're talking about, so we can have the discussion of whether or not we leave the Title IX reference. That's I think probably preference and along the same lines for me is Elkra because again, it's referenced in fifty-five seventeen. To me, it doesn't hurt to have them referenced.
Yeah, we're in, I think we're in agreement about, and I just would like to keep, for this part, we'd, we'd like to keep the state law that is most accurate and most, at this point in our history, most strongly supports our students. As if you look at this policy, that is the law on which we are. And so any kind of new interpretations of federal law are, are not gonna, you know, at this point, our state law is what we are clearly referencing, so.
It's a first reading, right?
Yeah. So I don't think we're voting on it anyways. But I would suggest that when we bring it back, we could bring it back with Elliot Larson reference for reading too. Are we okay to move on? Are we? Well, I don't know, just, I think this is it for policy.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, no, thank you very much, Lauren. So I'd like to, like to move to, without objection, if you don't mind, to have a quick bio break for about five to seven minutes. And we'll reconvene in eight forty-ish, pardon? Whatever, seven, thirty-four plus seven, you work it. What's wrong?
Well, we're gonna do a bio break, but then we just have like administration board updates and.
We have a lot to cover still yet afterwards. Well, we have one objection to a bio break. We'll get there. Thank you. Thank you. We are back. Thank you very much for, uh, uh, for that. Administration Board Updates, I'll let Dr. Lott start. I'd like to be the tail of this one.
Okay, I have three quick ones. Um, as was mentioned earlier, we had a great groundbreaking at the middle school on the twentieth and really excited about the direction of both the SMS updates, the senior center updates and the Liberty Recreation Complex. I think that's going to be great for our students and our community. So it's great to see how well we're progressing with the bond work under the leadership of, you know, our entire core team and our teaching staff and administrators. And we're just thrilled to be able to, um, see all this come to fruition. Uh, secondly, congratulations to all the STEAM programs for incredible seasons. I was able to go to the awards ceremony for this leading middle school Science Olympia team this weekend and just proud of all their accomplishments, a lot of top-three finishes in all their events. And then therefore excited to be part of the May fifth STEAM recognition ceremony, which is coming up. Um, the other thing we're doing in the community that I think is important work is as part of CQC, which is a community coalition group, including the schools, is we're working on dealing with or helping people that are in transitional housing situations in, in the community. And so we have another meeting this Thursday and feeling like that's a collaborative effort that is really looking at this problem of, um, people being unhoused. So that's what I have today.
Student Sonnande.
Um, I don't have any updates tonight, but thank you to the band and for Decca for coming in tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing them. That was, that was awesome. You brought the band in as well? Oh, sorry. Right, sorry. Mr. Austin.
Um, just want to give another shout out to, uh, the Superintendent Recognition Nate Lampman. Um, you know, he has touched many lives. He was my sister's band teacher and then my kid's band teacher. So that just kinda tells you the, the length he's been around. And then the Human Resource Report, right now, we see a lot of, uh, influx of, uh, and, well, retirements and resignations and stuff like that. And, uh, this one, we had Dr. Superintendent Steve Lott was on there and, uh, that was kind of a, a real thing to see. So thank you for all the work you've done to and all the students you've touched.
Mr. Gerby.
All right. Uh, I also want to thank the band members and the, the Decca individuals who joined us tonight. Um, I love it when we have music here and it's just, it creates such a positive environment. And I'm just, I get really excited and I just have tremendous admiration for, for those individuals and, and then to hear how they're like so independently motivated to do it was just totally fantastic. So whether it's vocal, whether it's band, whether it's orchestra, I just, you know, those are examples of incredible programs that we provide for kids. And when you hear about creativity, and I remember my kid like, uh, recording himself right at home, sending off a video and then getting back like an entire band concert. Like, so like, just totally like creative. Mr. Lampman spoke to it, like, they really did, like, go above and beyond for kids. And even though the kids sometimes had to wear weird things on their faces and all that, but whatever. Um, anyway, so I want to thank Mr. Lampman, Lampman, who, you know, is leaving what I called, I told him earlier, a Shaquille O'Neal-sized pair of shoes, but we both agreed that, uh, the future is also bright though, he, for, for kids in, in music programs here. So, and he, 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 and it, you know, his commitment to, um, to student teachers and to his colleagues like assures me of that. So thank you, Mr. Lampman. Uh, I also want to speak about quickly about retirements, notable retirements on our board packet, including that guy over there. All right, um, these are people who have given their lives to students and to our families and, and to my families. And, uh, to my family and my students and my kids and thank you. All right, uh, autism awareness in, in April. So, um, some of the most cherished moments I've, I've had, I've ever experienced as an educator have been with students with autism who, you know, and these stu-, I, I hope that these students feel loved, appreciated this month for being exactly who they are. Um, and then I guess I would say State Testing Week, so now I'm gonna back it up with, ugh. Um, but kids, it's almost over, you know, SAT, kick butt on the SAT, crush it, get it over with and then we'll get back to normal business. And then the last thing is that I just want to acknowledge for about thirty seconds that there, I know there's a lot going on in the world right now. And, uh, there's, with that comes heightened feelings and anxiety. And, you know, I see through protests and I see through our emails that just individuals are struggling to, to understand what's happening right now. And, and what I will tell you as a trustee and, and as a teammate, I really believe that we fight for kids here and that every kid matters to us and we want them all to have rights and to be the students, just be loved for who they are in our schools. And so, all right, that's all. Good night.
Night. Uh, not much of an update. Um, I think that we're going to be looking at CARES grants maybe the next time around. Okay. And no knock to any of us, but Brian Puffer knows how to run a tight ship. Thirty to forty-five minutes, just saying. Yep. Um, uh, as to, uh, awareness of any issue, I think that it's great to highlight that because, um, whatever you are bringing to someone's awareness opens a door for understanding and outreach for inclusivity. Uh, when I work with my autistic kids every day, um, as we walk the halls and the general students, um, engage with them or my students engage with the environment around them. And I think, uh, Celine with the, the murals, um, the things that we do in our lives do affect other people. And, um, if someone is bringing something to your awareness, take that chance to just, or that moment to look and see how you can include them in your lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
Um, I'm going to briefly echo, uh, the shout out to Mr. Lampman and the musicians. Um, I think for a lot of kids, um, mine included, uh, music is the continuity, uh, for four years of, uh, their high school. You know, they may move through different teachers and different classes, but, you know, they're seeing Mr. Lampman or Mr., every day. Um, and so I really appreciate that kind of safe, warm, uh, musical place, uh, that kids have here. Um, I, this month got to hear some concerts, uh, both band and orchestra. Um, I want to shout out all the spring athletes who are getting started and hopefully we'll have some spring weather for them to get started in soon enough. Um, I have heard that there were some really great shows put on by our drama, uh, students and clubs. So lots of great happenings. Um, one of these days I'm getting to a play. Um, and then, uh, I want to speak about Autism Awareness Month and, uh, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion together because equity and inclusion and honoring the neurodiversity that we have in the community are all really, uh, very tied in with the best of what we can be as a school and as a district. Um, and so, um, our, uh, kids and teachers and, uh, staff who may live with autism, uh, bring their talents and their strengths. And we also need to meet challenges and that is all, um, what equity is about, is helping people, uh, reach their full potential. And, uh, celebrating diversity means celebrating our students with autism as well. I'd also like to shout out, uh, families and parents of students, uh, with autism this month. Um, the paraeducators, the educators. Uh, this is all, uh, a part of us doing that kind of extra support that, uh, students, many students need in our district. And, um, just because this month is April, I will shout out autism awareness as part of that, uh, really important work. And I will shout out my, um, one of my favorite little relatives as well. And, you know, I wouldn't change one thing about him, including his diagnosis.
So April is a big month. Uh, thank you to the parent that, uh, mentioned autism awareness and deaf history awareness. That was a good one. I didn't know that one. Uh, April is a couple of big, uh, months, uh, for what I do, uh, for a career. So April is Second Chance Month, uh, as well as Alcohol Awareness Month. Uh, so those are big, uh, things. But it's also a huge month for schools. So it's, uh, School Library Month, which, uh, which is a big one. We have, uh, great media centers here, uh, in Celine. Fantastic. Um, Lauren just mentioned, uh, the ParaPros that, uh, work with all of our students. Uh, last week was Paraprofessionals Appreciation Day. So, um, I missed that one. I apologize to everybody for missing that one. Uh, School Librarian Appreciation Day was also last week. Um, this week is National Assistant Principals Week. Uh, I'd like to give a big shout out to the middle school principal. I know we shouldn't single out anyone, but, uh, she does a fantastic job, uh, especially with, uh, with my daughter. So I'd like to thank her for that. Um, also in a couple of weeks, we have Public School Volunteer Week and we have had a number of volunteers come in, uh, over the last couple of months that we've been able to see what contributions they make, uh, to our, uh, to our district. And volunteers are the cornerstone. Uh, and then finally, uh, one of my favorite ones, and is Rex still here? Yeah, Rex is still here. So, uh, on the twenty-second is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. And let me just say that our bus drivers are fantastic. And, uh, they are not appreciated enough. They deserve more than just one day. But, uh, thank you to the whole transportation team for, uh, keeping all of our students moving.
Thank you. I appreciate the, uh, reference to the school librarians. I, I did not know that. But I wanted to comment on it because I, I read Bill Gates's book recently, uh, Source Code, where he talks about his, his, his formative years. And he is absolutely beholden to a librarian who recognized the skill set that he had. And when he transferred schools, uh, he, he was most devastated at not being able to work with that particular librarian who was noticing his, his strengths and his skill set. Um, I, any old time, Ben. Uh, I'd like to make a statement. Um, as you are aware, the SEA and the district have been in salary negotiations for nearly a year. Uh, significant progress has been made and the negotiating, the team negotiating on behalf of the Board of Education, us, uh, continues to work collaboratively on the salary schedule. I just want a quick shout out to Carol Baki-Diglio, Miranda Ausley, Cara Davis, uh, Rex Clary, Teresa Stager, Principal at the High School, Megan DeGrand, Principal at Heritage, and Emily Sikler, Principal at Harvest, who are on the negotiating team. On February twenty-sixth this year, many, oh, go back one though, please, Ben. Many, uh, February twenty-sixth this year, many teachers attended the Board of Education meeting to show their support as the SEA president made a statement, uh, on their behalf. Uh, the presentation led to some articles in the Celine Post and the Sun Times, which were great. The negotiating teams then entered into mediation on March tenth. And, uh, mediation was held again on March eighteenth with very little movement. And the third meeting is scheduled for next week, April fourteenth. I'm not sure how many more meetings they have scheduled. The Board of Education would like to share the district's most current offer as of February fourth, twenty-twenty-five with you now. And I'm going to just walk us through the three slides without comment, but this are, this is the offer. Uh, Ben, anytime. So the original collective bargaining agreement basically, uh, gen-, uh, accepted the lanes and steps granted for eligible employees. And for those of you who aren't a teacher and aren't familiar with these terms, let me just mention, a step is that each year that happens that you stay with the district, you move up a step, up a step, up a step, um, until a, a certain point. Uh, lanes are, mean a change in salary. Uh, basically if you've earned a master's degree or a doctoral degree. And in fact, we had a couple of faculty here who had earned two doctoral degrees, which is quite interesting. Though, that's what we refer to, lane changes. To, and double masters as well, which is, well, anyway, you, you don't distract me. Uh, all the steps, every step indicates a four percent increase in salary on the schedule. And that is in effect this year, whether there's, whether the contract is, uh, renegotiated or not. It's, we've agreed to that one already. Ben, if you can go to the next slide. Uh, here's the most recent offer. There are a, during this year, a six hundred dollar off-schedule payment to all certified staff active as of the end of February. What that, this, this year, what that means is it's just a, uh, piece of money, uh, six hundred dollars, uh, with no strings attached. During this, uh, year, twenty-five, twenty-six, the, the district has offered to eliminate step one from the salary schedule. And we're going to be looking at that i- in the next slide, which means that you get to start as a new teacher at step two. They've also included, they've added a step sixteen to the salary schedule, which reflects a two percent increase. And at the end of September, there will be a three percent increase, uh, of the salary schedule. And as of September first, a four percent step increase, uh, in lanes for all eligible employees. Um, let's go to the year, the next year, they've offered a two percent increase on a salary schedule and a four percent step increase in lanes for eligible employees. Longevity pay remains the same from the previous contract. The bottom line is that this is, this will, the amount of money that the district is adding to salaries, and I'm hoping I'm getting all of this right, is five point four million dollars. Thirteen, thirteen percent increase for certified staff on the steps and seven percent increase for certified staffs on a step increase over two years. And if you could go to the next slide, Ben. Uh, what you're looking at on the, the, the table on the far left indicates the lanes, bachelor's, masters, and masters plus or PhD. And, um, and each of the horizontal rows indicates the, uh, salary step. So you can pick, pick a, a lane if you want and as, imagine yourself as a teacher, let's say starting at lane five. And we'll look at comparisons in just a second. Uh, next year you would earn fifty-two-nine, uh, the year after that fifty-five, forty-one. The district has offered, uh, the increases and they show up in these schedules. So for twenty-twenty-five, if you're on lane five, as I understand it, you would then start at fifty-two, four, one, six. And the year after you would go to one over, fifty-five, six, oh, two. Um, so you can play with this and follow around, uh, along, uh, to see the increases. The first row has been slashed off on those last two tables because that's the first step. And they're just gonna, they, they're offering, we are offering to eliminate that. And the very bottom is line, lane sixteen, uh, which is newly added. And Ben, if you can go to the very last slide, is just, these are just e- examples. Um, if you're in steps one to thirteen, there's a thirteen percent increase, uh, seven percent next year, this year, one would hope, and seven percent the following year. If you're on step fourteen, it's an eleven percent increase, uh, because they shift into a different sort of step system. And, uh, employees on step fifteen through twenty-five will see a seven percent increase over the next two years. And I believe that's the last slide and I just wanted to offer these all without comment. And thank you and the negotiating team very much for all of the efforts you've put into that. Thank you. The Consent Agenda. You can take the slides down anytime, Ben. The, oh, uh, one thing I did want to add is that all of these slides will be available on our district website in the next day or two. Uh, yes, I'm getting a nod from our communications director. So you can study them at length. Uh, Consent Agenda, I'm not going to read it aloud, but, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the Consent Agenda as amended.
Let's move to Berwick.
Berwick.
Second.
Uh, Austin, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, six oh. We, very good. Uh, items on the next agenda, Dr. Lott?
We have a Celine Community Education A- Annual Update and we'll also talk CARES. Um, Darcy mentioned that before. And then we also have two Superintendent Recognitions. One is the Washtenaw United Girls Hockey Team. And then we also will be honoring the state champion boys swim and dive team. And then we also will be honoring the state champion boys swim and dive team.
Fantastic this year. Thank you, both of them did. Public comment, a public member of the public can address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be put on the agenda of a future meeting. We have, pardon? Susan Eastep, it's all you.
This thing shocked me. So just real quick, policy 5540 that was discussed. There is an administrative guideline. I did point this out during the policy meet, that policy meeting. But there's an administrative guidelines that were posted last year. And it actually is specific, relationship with governmental agencies is specific to the principal. And so, let's see. So it says the principal will remain in the room during the questioning. And that's specific for like the law and everything. So that, I encourage you all to look at that. When you're looking at, you know, because there's two, like Neola and Throon. So make sure that that's accurate. I know we don't approve administrative, sorry, you all don't approve administrative guidelines necessarily. But that's a good thing to keep in mind because it answers that question. So regarding policy 5517.02, I don't know if I, I meant to say it in my last comment. But at the meeting, when it was discussed, the proposed revisions, from what I heard, are not based on legally required opinion. And it was a suggest, suggestion that the superintendent said can be considered or not. So I don't think that was, something could have changed between then, but I don't know. So this policy was actually adopted in 2021. And so at that time, we did have Neola policies. And so the 2024 is irrelevant with those dates regarding, yeah, anyways, that was mentioned earlier, sorry. And so since the board has adopt, since the board adopted Neola, Neola policy packet in 2018, their policies have always been inclusive with sexual orientation and gender identity in their language. I do want to say there was a Neola the previous board received last year when there was an update about Title IX. They were specifically talking about the cases and the question of, you know, 2020, 2024 regulations. So not a dear colleague letter, but the regulations. And so there, the question was Bostock in that decision. So Neola has that they interpreted sex to include sexual orientation and gender identity that they have for a number of years predating Bostock. And then also, so they were looking at a decision from 2016, holding that discrimination against transgender students likely constitutes sex discrimination under Title IX. So I want to, I want to put that out there that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
It's out there now. Thank you. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on April 22nd, 2025 at 6:30. I can hardly wait. I'd like to enter, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into closed session with the board at nine, at 9:07 with intent to reopen at approximately 10? 9:45? 10 o'clock. I always underestimate it, approximately 10 o'clock. For the purpose to discuss matters under attorney-client privilege that are exempt from disclosure pursuant to state and federal law under Section 8H. Under Section 8H, a two-third roll call vote is required. I'm going to just call you alphabetically.
So moved.
Reverse alphabetical.
So moved.
Oh, let's, we have to move it though?
I second.
Good call, thank you.
Second, Berwick.
Tim Austin, Darcy Berwick. But before we can go into that, let's have the vote. Thank you very, you were on it. Oh, my gosh, you are. Tis it is.
Aye.
Aye, Steph, Steph is on here, McBey, aye, Gold.
Aye.
Gerby.
Yep, he says, Berwick.
Austin, thank you very much. Thank you for your service this evening, Kate, appreciate it. And good luck in the, you're not doing SATs tomorrow, are you? Senior.
I just rescind it. Fucking just rescind it.
Uh, maybe that's what has to happen.
Sorry.
Yes, please. We're back. I'd like to entertain a motion to return to open session at 9:53.
So moved. Tizidus.
Back in and Berwick.
9:53. And who is it? Tizidus and Berwick? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of April 8th at 9:53 and a half.
Motion, Tizidus.
Tizidus and Gerby. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Bergy, Bergy. It gets so punchy. All in favor, I have six oh. Thank you very much. I get to tap us out. Thank you.